Excellent. Thank you very much. I will now take privilege of the floor, so that starts with Sylvia Short and then Peter Roy. And you have three minutes.
My name is Sylvia Short. I was born in the record town of Caroline. My mom and her siblings and grandfather, the whole town, they're from here else. I have lived within a three mile radius my whole entire life, except for the first year of marriage. We live in Newfield. It's a nice little town, but it's not home. Mark, I asked you why zoning now and who said to look over the town of Caroline in the future? Caroline is 200 years old and has had no problems. We have had enough rules in New York State and we have had our own in Caroline. We are very protected by the rules in place. As Jay Payton had said, we don't have municipal water and sewer, so no big businesses are gonna come out here. They don't want to come out. If they did, they would have been here by now. I understand you wanted to watch for the future of our town, but give all the people in this town of Caroline a little more credit. We have done great and we will continue to do so without zoning. Because we truly love our town. As of 2020, Newfield population is 5,126 and is 200 years old. Enfield population is 3,362 and is 218 years old. Caroline population is 3,334 and is also 200 years old. Why can't we, the three, be zoning free?
Thank you. For your thoughts and your ideas and very well expressed. Thank you. Where are you, Peter?
I'm here.
Oh, I didn't see you back there.
Where should I stand and best impress everybody?
I guess in the typical, thank you. In the typical spot there, it'll work great on.
And we'll turn the thing on you. Yep.
Hello out there in television land. I was here at the last zoning commission meeting and I was struck near the end of the meeting that it appears that nobody on the commission really, really understands how farming works. You know, it's disgusting quite a bit, but you know, you guys just don't, don't know. I mean, you don't have any farmers as well. And I know that you've asked the Ag Committee, which I'm a member of, to advise you. And that's, that's good that you did that. I think it'd be even better if you had a farmer on the zoning commission as a voting member. I've stressed many, many times that, that that would be a good idea. Most surround out the commission. You've had three people leave already. And to have a farmer on there, if you're gonna be discussing ag overlays, wouldn't it be nice to have somebody who knows what he or she is talking about? So I only urge you once again to consider that. The Ag Committee will be very happy to meet with the commission and with the town board under, you know, any circumstances you guys want to invite us to. But, you know, coupled with that, if you had somebody on your own commission that understood this kind of stuff better, I think it'll all be well ahead of the game.
Thank you, Peter. Does anyone else wish to speak to the privilege of the floor this evening?
I would like to say something, please.
May I have your name?
My name is Rebecca Phillips. And I would like to ask the question. Apparently, you can only ask the zoning commission questions. You can't do anything other than that and they decide whether they want to answer them or not. My question is, can you prove that we've been derelict and abusive and negligent in our taking care of our town? I would like proof of that, that we have been so abusive that you've decided to take upon yourselves. And it seems to be a select few that's from a particular area that are, have developed this union against the major portion of the town of Caroline. I want you, I challenge you to prove to us what you think is negligent and how we have been so bad, so terrible, so negligent. Prove it.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. I will say, I generally don't respond to these, but I will say that in what the town board asked the people that are on the zoning commission to do, nothing was ever said about negligence. But I will put that question to, to people and we'll get you a written answer. If you would give me your, your email and you could come up later and write that, or you could just write that down, that would be great. So I can make sure that we get back to you. Do you have email or a phone number?
Oh, yes, I do.
Okay.
I've sent emails to you and you've got nothing. So.
I don't believe that you've gotten nothing. You may not have liked the answer, but don't tell me you've gotten nothing.
To deal with this is totally ridiculous.
Ms. Phillips?
I find this whole zoning commission biased. You have your own criteria, your own desire. You have, you have decided that you're gonna condemn us because of your own ideology.
Ms. Phillips?
I challenge you.
Ms. Phillips, your three minutes is up. Miss, I'm.
I'm sorry.
You're not that sorry. Let me tell you that I've put over a year of my time and the other people on this commission have too into doing this because the town board asked us. And I have lived in this town for 52 years and I treasure living here. And I took on that responsibility, as did other members. I don't usually get this destroyed about this, but I am really tired of being attacked. I am very tired of being attacked. I've been attacked personally. I got what I considered a death threat since the subject line read, "Your life is in danger." And I actually, we called the state police, who went and spoke to the perpetrator, who explained that what that person had done was a crime and could be arrested for doing what that person had done. I'm not ever gonna tell you who it was. If I had known who it was at the time and I knew the person personally, I would have dealt with it myself, but I did not know that person. And I am very tired of this. So don't attack me personally and don't attack us personally.
I didn't attack you personally.
I am, I am not speaking to you personally. I am now speaking to these people.
I accused you for attacking me.
You just.
I did not attack you personally.
Okay. I have been attacked personally. I have been.
No, you're attacking us personally.
I am not attacking you personally. I'm not. Oh, God. I am. I'm gonna stop and I'm really goddamn tired.
Okay. Yeah, Jean, you need some support here to gain order in that room there. And I'm hoping some of the folks in the audience would, would help do that as well. All right. We appreciate the comments that Ms. Phillips has made, but yes, she's well over her three minutes of time.
Thank you. I'm really sorry for losing my patience, but I have lost my patience. And maybe I'll find it again somewhere. I don't know. The minutes of the April 14th meeting have been sent out, but they were sent out too late to give anybody a rational time to read them. So we're not gonna approve them tonight. We'll approve them at the next meeting. Tim Murray, our town council liaison, is not able to be with us this evening. Mark, is there anything that you would like to report on behalf of the town board?
Uh, no, I don't have a report.
Thank you. And I'm gonna take my mask off because I was asked to take my mask off. And I can't get it myself. I'm sorry for anybody else in the room who was wishing I was wearing it. I can't get it because I just had it. So. The first draft of the zoning law, we have several things that have not been finished up. And I will go through those. And then we can go through this. If there's anything I have not mentioned, please let me know those on the, on the committee. Setbacks and road right of way, we began to talk about last week or the last meeting, which was 12 days ago now. So we wanna go over that. The water resources overlay, we also talked about at the last meeting and we want to go over that now that we have some more information. Site plan review. And I have some, I wanted to let you know that I have talked to the chair of the review committee, Craig. Mo.
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 Craig Mo.
Motorship, Motorship. I'm blanking on his last name. And they were, are trying to call a meeting together. We sent, I sent them stuff to look at. And I think they may have a meeting in next week or the weekend. The 11? Okay, that's great to know. Thank you. The Ag Committee sent a something that they wrote and I wanna find that and then I will read that to you. There it is. So this came from Catherine Goldberg, the councilwoman. "I want to make sure to pass along some thought provoking information regarding agriculture and land use planning that we are discussing in the local Ag Committee. I'd be so grateful if you could familiarize yourself with this to assist in our ongoing engagement and dialogue regarding land use, farming, agriculture, and planning efforts. The attachment is a good starting point and the two links here are also helpful. Some ideas which bear highlighting. The first is preserving the land base is at best only a partial solution because farmland cannot really be preserved unless it is being actively and profitably farmed. The second point is many communities approach the protection of farmland and farms through zoning measures that are intended to help preserve farmland. There are many variations of this, many well intended, but most quite counterproductive. The third is experience has shown that incentive based mechanisms for farmland preservation, such as purchase of development rights, property tax reductions for active farming, and various forms of local subsidy for farmers are politically more palatable and more, more likely to engender cooperation from landowners. I wanted to say about those that purchase development rights, I'd like to ask Nan more about that. And property tax reductions are clearly something you can't do through zoning. That's a, that would be up to the town council, the town board to do for active farming. And various forms of local subsidy for farmers, I'm not quite sure what those all are. There are two links that I've sent out to the board of the committee by a person named John Russell.
Joel.
Oh, excuse me, Joe Russell, you're right. I'm, I'm not reading that particularly well. And then there was an article that is from, it's called Practical, it's from the American Planning Association Practicing Planner from the winter of 2009, also by Joel Russell. How, how well has agriculture protection zoning worked? So you all have that. And from my point of view, I think we should read these. I don't think we should hold up the second draft of the articles one, two, and three in order to make any changes at this point. If we read something in here that makes us want to change anything, we can do that because we've got time. So that, that's that. And then.
Jean, a quick note for me, Jean?
Yep.
Sorry, so just, I'm no, by no means any expert on this, but just to clarify, the town board can't arbitrarily decide to assess a different level of top property tax for, for most groups. It's pretty rigid in that regard. But there, that is what the Ag assessment is, of course. The state has set up a mechanism whereby agricultural properties with enough production get, get a property tax break. But there is a provision in state law whereby towns can essentially apply to become part of a club that can set up their own easements, which is the proposal that the planning board put into the comprehensive plan for that reason. And Topkins County is one of the counties that is, I think, already on that list. And then we would just have to get Caroline on the list. Anyway, so it's not so easy just to say, oh, we'll charge less property tax if you're a farm. But there are mechanisms whereby that might be able to be done.
Okay. Um, maybe I will make sure that, Tim, I'm sure will look at this and maybe that would be something that the town board will wanna think about too.
Did you post those on the website, the Joel Russell?
Sure, I can do that. Let me write that down. We also had a an email from H.L. Robinson about mining. And I want to read that to you as well, because I'm, it's a question that I think we need to ask Nan about. Okay, so basically.
That'd be the gentleman who owns the gravel.
He owns Robinson Sand and Gravel. Yep.
Robinson's not located here. I think they are either, I think they're leasing. I don't know if they've actually purchased University Sand and Gravel, but they're certainly operating it. They're the current operators of it. And they were an existing gravel company from down, I think, Candor, maybe. I'm not exactly positive.
Yeah. Anyway, he basically says that, and I'm having a very hard time finding his letter, that mining should be a separate area. And Nan had said that perhaps we didn't need to do that. I wanna ask Nan about why do you think that mining doesn't have to be a separate area so that we can think about that some more?
Well, I, I think the question was, should there be a zoning district set up around the mine that allows for mining? And I think my, my answer was that I, I think the zoning commission definitely ought to look at mining. And there's two kinds of mines that we look at. One is the mines that are smaller, that do not require a DEC mining permit and which the town can regulate or not regulate in any way it wants to. Or the large mines that are over 750 cubic yards of material removed in any 12 consecutive months are regulated by, in quite detailed, regulated by DEC through the mining permit process. And so I think the, it brings up a really good question for the zoning commission to consider. I think the small mines, we haven't really talked about. And those are things like, you know, small gravel mines that a farm may have on their property or a shale pit, or maybe the town has a local place that it gets shale for roads or, or highway, highway use. And that those are small areas that don't require DEC involvement. So the fact that the current draft use table does not discuss mining, I, I think that we, I think the letter brought up a good point. I think you should, I think you should consider, you know, how you wanna deal with that. Because then right now, without mining on the use table, that would be considered a use that's not allowed in the town. That's how a use table works. So part of my answer is, you know, I think you ought to look at mines as the small versus large, because that's how it's regulated in New York State. And in terms of creating a zone, a zoning district and drawing the line around the mine, I think my question was, and I, I haven't thought about it a lot because it just came up today. But I would be concerned that when you create a zoning district for one use, that's, you know, there's a fine line there between meeting the goals of the comprehensive plan and spot zoning. And so we always are very careful about developing a zoning district for a single use on a single parcel or parcels that are owned by a single entity for that use. So I'm just cautious about that. And I would be cautious also is that it's a mine now and it might be a mine for 20 years or 30 years or who knows what, but someday it won't be a mine. Not that you can't change things later on, but I think that just calling it a mine and only allowing mining there might not be very long, you know, that might not give you as an expansive view as you might need to do. You, you could develop an area, you could call it industrial or mining and industrial and enlist in the use table, you know, a, a variety of uses that you might think would be appropriate for that area in the future. You, you know, and I, I just would be concerned. We, I just think that we have to really think about creating a specific district for a specific use. But there are other ways of handling it. You could include mining in the use table just as an allowed use under a special use permit with site plan review in the ag rural district. You could, you could say that you're gonna allow mining to continue as is, as, as long as it has a DEC mining permit. So basically, you're handing over the authority, the regular authority to DEC. There are some things that the town can look at with the DEC mining permits, but it's limited. You could say that we're going to allow it to continue, but not expand. So there's different ways of handling it, but I, 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 you know, I think it's, it's good that this came up and I, I think we hadn't had this discussion yet. So I would turn it back to the zoning commission to kinda get your head wrapped around the small mines. And if you wanna do anything, and if you don't wanna regulate the small mines, then I think then at least you need to put it on the use table as a permitted use so that farmers and other people who have small shale pits can continue to use them. Or you may feel that those need some sort of site plan review. I don't know. You'll have to discuss that. So that's where, that's a more expansive answer from what I emailed this afternoon.
Does anyone, I see Bill's hand up.
Yeah, so, and thanks, Dan, for, for going through because you actually hit a couple of the points that I was going to potentially bring up. But, and Jean, just from memory, my recollection that Mr. Robinson's main request, one was, right now, mining is listed as under, you know, industrial use heavy. And he said, "We should be separate. Mining should have a separate definition in your definition table." And then he also wanted that to be an allowed use in the, in the use table. And the concern I brought up is if we simply did that, that since the gravel pit is in the ag rural district, that would mean mining would be allowed anywhere in the ag rural district, which is a possible choice the zoning commission could make, but to me felt not consistent with the other choices we've been making. And we did consider an industrial zone in one of the very first maps. That was like option four, had it, you know, and we rejected the time. But I think it's worth revisiting that idea now that we're all a bit more well versed in, in this. But the main question I had for Nan was, so what does it mean if it had to grandfather a mine? I understand if you have a building, you can say no more than 25% bigger. But with a mine, you know, they're going down. They're not necessarily going bigger in area. So I wasn't really, still not fully including what the grand, if we did not add it as an allowed use in general, but allowed it to be a grandfathered use in that location, what the implications really were on their operation? And that's what I was wanting to explore at some point. I don't think this instant is necessarily a time. But that's what I was wondering is, of these options Nan laid out, grandfathered use, allowed throughout the ag rural, or something else. And the something else, I probably thought, well, what if we had a zone that allowed housing and mining? And I think that I understand that this is spot zoning issue and I'm sympathetic to that. So come back off of that. But I don't know how to handle this. They recently are putting a lot of money in there, you know, gonna be operating for a while. I am fine with them operating there, but I also think that it would be consistent with our overall vision of the town to say, okay, we're gonna have gravel pits or other kinds of mines many places in the ag rural district.
Um, so let me just, the, the grandfathering, that 25% increase. So it would be, it, it doesn't necessarily mean square footage of a building, but it would be 25% of their area. So if they, you know, if they mine 50 acres now, under the grandfather clause, they would be allowed to mine 25% of whatever their acreage is to expand. I mean, that's one way of handling it.
They're taking the surface off of much of that area, but if they go down, that doesn't change the area. So that's not at all a problem with the grandfathering, as I hear you say it.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and we might want to clarify what that 25% means to answer that question.
And my similar question was, again, they had a weigh station, a little single wide trailer. And last year, they put it over on the other side of the road. I assume the old one was, you know, needed repair or whatever. And it's cheaper to put it next door. So now they have another single wide trailer and a weigh station. Does that, would that have not been allowed? Were this a grandfathered use?
Um, yeah, I'd have to think about that. That may be, that may be true. Is it on a different parcel of land?
It might be, because, because the gravel pit is at least two parcels and they may be split by Perkins Road. I'd have to look at the tax map to be sure.
Yeah. You know, if it's a new use on that parcel and it was basically an accessory use to the mine, I think that that could be problematic. You know, I would say most communities require a special use permit for large mines. Some communities prohibit them. And where you prohibit large mines, even if DEC says we give the mining permit, your zoning still rules. So, but when you do allow mining, the DEC regulates the operation of the mine. So they, they regulate all of the nitty gritty stuff that goes out in the mine, where it is, how it operates, you know. There's like five things on the list that the town is eligible to review under a special use permit. But it does give you some review capacity for that. Or a site plan review.
Thank you.
I believe it's one parcel. And I also think that the DEC or the state regulates the depth that they can go legally. Because there's a tributary on the other side of that. And I read something in the past about it could only go so deep to be under the bed of the stream that's over on the other side of the, the gravel pit. And I was gonna ask, you said something about a small pit. Is that just a pit that doesn't have to have a permit?
Well, it's, 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 it's defined by how much is taken out each and any 12 consecutive month period. So if it's 750 cubic yards or less, it's not permit, it's not needing a permit from DEC.
Okay. Which isn't a whole lot.
No, it's not a huge amount.
And truck load, trucks, you're, you're there.
Okay, and I do just check the checks, mapping versus write, it's all, that's all one parcel where they, certainly where they put the buildings.
Okay, I'm gonna.
I would presume that they had that part, was part of their, I would presume the DEC had some oversight on that since it was part of their mining operation. But, you know, I can't be sure.
And let me just say that for those listening in, we had looked at what are, what everyone has, who has a mine of this sort, has to have a plan for what they do after the mine closes. And the mine closes when it's no longer, you know, profitable. And they're, they have to return it to a more natural state. So they have to reseed, they have to put in grass, they have to add trees. You could make it a lake because of the pit. And the DEC has, and regulates that. Yes.
I've gotta get going, but the thing I'm thinking is if DEC is telling you this is what you have to do, why do we need zoning?
Well.
I'm just gonna go. I gotta go.
Okay.
I just don't get it.
Um. Can I tell you? Let me say that I do think that it makes sense for us to think about adding this as to the terms and definitions. And if we should have a discussion about whether we should put this into the use table.
I would make a motion.
Uh huh.
Right. Put mining in the use table, allow it in the ag rural zone, subject to SPR. That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
I just have a question though, Ernie, for that. Are you talking about both small and large mines or what? What, what are you talking about when you said add it? There, because there's two different kinds of mines.
Both.
Both?
Both.
And maybe.
And SPR, not, not a, not a special use permit, Ernie?
I'm open to discussion. I, I, I just.
Does anyone wanna speak to that? Site plan review or, or?
Well, I think the bigger question is, do we, you know, do we wanna have it anyway?
Right. So we have a motion on the table. We have a second. Does anyone wanna speak against that motion?
I'm ambivalent. All right. As I spoke earlier, you know, we have tried to craft a zoning plan that preserves the rural character and gravel pits are certainly part of. Preserves the rural character and gravel pits are certainly part of rural character, but uh, and I'm very happy to live near one. So it's not like I have a beef to grind against uh, this particular gravel pit. Um, but uh, indeed hearing Bruce talk about what that land looked like when he was a boy. Uh, mines are big operations and we were trying to craft something that encouraged essentially small is beautiful in this town. And so I just feel that. A, a large operation like the gravel pit should be allowed to continue. And, and do what it's doing and do what it needs to stay in business within reasonable grounds, like going down deeper or putting in a new building for a new way station. Uh, but not open up the field so that we'll get other industrial operations elsewhere in the town. Maybe we can do an industrial zone. Uh, you know, I don't know. Any rate, so. I'm ambivalent. I can be argued that we should go ahead and allow this. I just uh. I'm concerned.
Okay, anyone else? Michelle?
Yeah, I think there should be a difference between a large operation and then a small operation that, that a farmer might have on their property.
Yeah.
I don't, I, I, I can't see lumping the both together and, and I'm against um, having another large operation like that, but I understand that um. You know, if you find gravel on your property, that's great, you know, and you can get extra money, but it's a small operation.
Um, I think Bill just sent a message saying Sultana is just outside to the south with another gravel pit.
Right.
Um. Anyone else want to speak to this? Uh, Barbara?
Uh, thanks. Um, I would be more comfortable uh, with two changes uh, to the motion. One. Uh, is, is that we explicitly um, distinguish between small. Mining operations versus large mining operations uh, in the definitions and what's required. And that large operations um, require a special use permit, uh, not SPR.
Okay. Is that a friendly motion? Uh, you're taking that as a friendly?
Ernie, Ernie has to decide if it's friendly or not.
I like that. I like those.
Ernie says you're friendly, so we're accepting that as a friendly amendment.
Is, is that what I, is that how it goes?
Yeah.
This is further into Robert's rules and then.
I unfortunately have to be familiar with the whole damn thing, so.
Yeah, say that again, the. Please.
Basically, she said that the uh.
There would be large mining operations. Defined differently than small mining operations. Large mining operations would be allowed in the ag rural district. Subject to special use permit.
Yes.
Small mining operations presumably would not.
And small using the definition that Nan had told us about the seven hundred and fifty, the DEC definition.
Uh, any.
And then how, how would you allow, would you allow or not allow? What are you going to say about the small mines?
Allow them.
Right, right, but with a site plan review or no review whatsoever? And in all districts or just ag rural?
Ag rural.
Ag rural is what I'm hearing.
I think there's some review. Sorry.
I mean, you know, again, I, I'm, you know, again, as a farmer who has some gravel on a bank in his, you know, property, I, yeah, it feels weird to ask for a site plan review, but if someone. Is gonna open up a mini gravel operation, then maybe it does. I, I'm again torn on, on that one, you know, uh, I don't know.
Well, just, just for instance, there's a, when, when they redid three thirty through Brooklyn down. They got gravel from a local farmer, so he made money, but they also moved a lot of, lot of stone. They got a lot of dirt. So I mean, that does happen when a large company comes in. Rather than travel miles to get stuff, they go to a local farmer and say. We need this and we believe you have that and so. You don't want to make it real hard, I don't think. For somebody, a farmer especially to.
Does anyone second Michelle's amendment about, about um, requiring site plan review? Uh, Barb, do you have your hand up again? I can't see.
Uh, yeah, I, I have a question um, on the small mining operations, you know, according to the definition we use. Um, is there um, if, if, if the proposed mining site. Is going to be close to a stream bed and, you know, an active stream bed, is there any um, uh, oversight from state or federal authorities that would? Um, you know, prevent uh, re uh, uh, you know, re redesigning this, the stream bed by the gravel that's taken out of it. Um, you know, in a detrimental way. Um, because if, if there is no oversight. Uh, then yes, I think there should be site plan review even for the small ones. But if there is some level of review, if it's close enough to a stream bed. Uh, then I'm comfortable with no review, no site plan review for the smaller sites, smaller mining.
Yeah, you, you can't take anything within. Uh, whatever the next buffer is past the riparian buffer. Next to a stream and you cannot do anything in a stream. So. I would believe that you have to be. Quite a distance from the stream before you can do anything. Any kind of escalation at all.
I see Bill's hand.
And yeah, so to my understanding, because I happened to look into this because of a question about the class A. Stream category. I think the DEC says you can't modify the bed or bank of a class A stream without a permit. Doesn't mean you can't do it. You have to get a permit from them. Uh, I don't, and, and I saw nothing about close to. Um, the riparian buffer is something where, you know, has been used in the zoning law and it's something that Topkins County in general has. Uh, you know, is, is encouraging, but I don't think. I didn't see anything on the DEC website, but again, I could have missed it. It was a quick skim. That talks about a riparian buffer zone, but they did talk specifically about the bank and the bed. But.
Michelle and then Nan.
Uh, well, how do you? How, I don't know how to put this in words. Um, who controls whether it's in fact a small operation? I mean, if there's no review. And you're just going on, you know, somebody's word that, oh yeah, this is a small operation. I feel like there has to be some kind of review, like even if it's just a, you know, an ASPR or APR, whatever. Um. Anyway, yeah, that's all I can say about that.
And?
Um, well, I, I guess. Presumably, yes. I mean, yes, you're right, Bill, that there's. DEC has the stream bed and bank permits. Um, there's also, you know, I don't know if there would be a situation where there would be any shale or gravel in or near a wetland, but those are also regulated. So presumably, yes, they are regulated. Um, but again, it's. Those small mines are often, people do it and, you know, there's, I could, you know, there's a lot of them that are just doing it. They just start digging and they start going. And nothing ever really gets. Um. You know, looked at until someone complains about it or someone notices it. Um, so I agree with Michelle, you know, that that brings it to the forefront of someone's. Attention. Um, you know, and presumably depending on how you set it up, the, if you go ahead with the water and flood overlay. Um, you know, that would be triggered to at least have an abbreviated site plan review as if it was an allowed land use and part of it was in the water overlay. So that, that in and of itself would trigger some sort of. At least abbreviated review. Um, you, you could make it a full site plan review if you want, but I, I agree with Bill that, you know, a lot of farmers. Dig out, you know, in the spring, a couple loads of shale for their barnyard. Um. So. You know, I think there's, there's. Different approaches that you can take, but I, I would say that um. I, I can only give you, you know, what typically happens and I would say that. Some communities just let them go. And some communities do require a site plan, but um, sometimes people don't know about it and they go and do it anyway.
Okay, Bill, I see your hand up?
Yeah, so, all right, so could, I mean, I know we could, so I'm now proposing the zoning commission, should we? Um, define three levels, like, you know, tiny, small and large. That is obviously anything regulated by the DEC that requires a DEC permit. That's our large one. Then we have small, which is under seven fifty cubic yards, but over something like over the, the farmer who needs a few truckloads of shale. And then, you know, in that definition, say, small removals. You know, a couple of times a year under X cubic yards are exempt. Um, from this definition and therefore are just not regulated at all. I mean, maybe that would be a way to go. Because I, I just feel a little open-ended to say anything under seven fifty cubic yards per year is okay without any review. Um, though I agree that if it's in the water reaches overlay, well, at least catch stream banks or stuff. But we should maybe at least say, but you don't need any review if you're just doing something tiny. You know, if, if there's a easy way out that way.
Okay, so what I have here now is this. Um. What I'm taking is what Bill just said. I'm taking that as a possible amendment. That says we have three definite, we have kind of three definitions and one basically says. Um, and I'm making this up, Bill, because you didn't give us a number. Uh, anything over, anything under. Two hundred and fifty cubic yards is okay, right? And that good enough? Okay. Do I have a second to that amendment? Michelle seconded that amendment. All in favor of that amendment, say aye.
I guess.
Aye. Aye.
He says.
No.
Nope.
No, no.
No. I say aye. That's, that's four to two.
Okay.
Okay, so that gives us the three definitions, the under. The second amendment was, was the one that Michelle offered, which is now moved because of this amendment. And then.
Well, no, not in, I, I think the medium category would then get.
Oh, you're right. The medium category, Michelle's meant was that it would get site plan review and that would be the two hundred and fifty to five hundred.
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty.
Excuse me, to seven fifty. So two fifty to seven fifty would get site plan review. Does that have a, does that have a second?
I'll second that.
That's still.
So now this is a different amendment now?
Yes, this says that the medium sized gets site plan review. The first one didn't get site plan review. We talked about the tiny ones.
And it's only going to be allowed in this.
Ag rural. They're both allowed only in the ag rural district. So I have. Uh, all those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Barb, Michelle?
Aye.
Ernie?
Luke.
Okay, so that's. Well.
Just for my notes, I, I just want to make sure that I, I got it right. So. You're asking for three definitions for mine. The large, which is seven hundred and, seven hundred and fifty or more cubic yards over a twelve-month consecutive period that matches the DEC. Definition.
Yep.
Is, is a special use permit in ag rural. A moderate. Level that's two hundred and fifty to seven hundred and fifty cubic yards over a twelve-month consecutive period, which would get site plan review. And a small category, which would be. Two hundred and fifty cubic yards or less over a twelve-month period. Permitted without a review.
Exactly. Exactly so. Good.
And, but we could permit that in all districts?
Yeah. So the question here should permit that in all districts. That's the tiny.
So, so, yeah, you can.
Okay.
You can, you can all.
Are people happy with permitting that in all districts?
I think I am.
Michelle? Barb?
We're permitting one in all districts.
Permitting the tiny ones in all districts.
Two hundred and fifty yards.
For instance, yes.
Yes.
I agree.
Okay, so that's in all districts, the tiny ones. Okay, I got it. And thank God we finished that one. Yay. Okay, so, and I think we're going to put the mining definitions in and we now have three other areas that I want to try to do tonight. Well, and four, because we're not going to give them all. Uh, one is. Uh, setbacks and road right-of-way. Why don't we do that? Because we did a lot of that last time. I think Bill has done a lot of work on this as well as Nan. Uh, anybody else wants to talk about this? I'm going to leave this to Bill then.
Okay, well, I mean, I just sprung off from where, what Ernie had actually reported, so. Um, and, and info we need from Nan is sort of what, when, when they proposed numbers, what would that, what measured from, so. Um, briefly, so that everyone in the audience as well knows the email that went out. Um, a lot of roads in the town, our town roads and county roads have been sort of in existence for a long time. They sort of grew up where. You know, the horses ran or whatever, and sometime in the middle of the last century, the state granted the town's authority to, to take care of those. And when they did that, even though the actual road surface is, you know, the ground, if you look at your property lines, they go right to the center line of the road. The state granted a roughly fifty-foot officially three-rod right-of-way. Uh, that the towns are to maintain or the local municipalities, because the counties too, are to maintain. Uh, and that's the width of the road. So when you look on um, a map, you'll see a right-of-way indicator. So when we came to think about setbacks, the question is what to measure from? Do you measure from the center of the road? Do you measure from the edge of the road? Do you measure from the right-of-way? And previously we weren't clear there really was a right-of-way, but we now know that indeed state law grants a certain width right-of-way around those roads. The one big difference is, is we have the one state road, Route seventy-nine. Uh, for that, the state has all kinds of other stuff in place and indeed there's a, a varying width right-of-way uh, around the, the state highway. Um, so in terms of a consistent thing to measure from. It seems that maybe the right-of-way uh, in terms of the roadside of, of someone's frontage might be the right thing to measure from. Um, because the roads will vary in width. If it's not a paved road, what is the edge of the road anyway? Uh, so um, the most consistent measure might be the edge of that right-of-way. So I think that is the thought in front of the commission is do we measure a setback from the right-of-way? Do we even want setbacks period? And if so, how big should they be? And then Nan to you, when you suggested things like twenty or thirty-foot right-of-ways. Um, you know, what, where was that number? And we know you measured actual things. Was that measured from the right-of-way? Was measured from what? And then, you know, the overall global question is, you know, why have setbacks? And so I threw one email out from stuff I gleaned, you know. Thorough research on the internet, you know, everything's out there. But, you know, the various purposes of the setback, not just to give sort of community feel, but. You know, to give a certain amount of safety if one house falls over its night, but not right up against another house, uh, to give a certain amount of airspace around a house, which helps with. You know, air quality as well as tempering of temperature and, and all this sort of stuff. So there are various rationales and public. Goods that do arise from having a setback, both from the property sides and from the road. Um, but I'm, I'm wanting to hear more discussion, particularly from Nan. On, on the function and purpose of a setback and what that might guide us to in terms of a distance.
Okay, and Ernie, since you wrote up some of this, is there anything you want to add to that?
Well, I just, you know, point out that the New York State Building Code regulates building setbacks. For uh, fire safety reasons, uh, wood frame construction. Has to be ten feet from the lot. Um, if you build fireproof construction, you can build right to the lot.
Ah.
Um, but um, so I think um. You know, that, that kind of, you know, life safety issue is, is, is largely covered with the, the building codes. Um. Uh. You know, other questions, you know, buildings falling over onto each other. I think that's a little bit of a stretch.
I've only seen the.
Agreed.
Cities.
I think that, uh, you know, being able to maneuver, uh, you know, a fire vehicle through the space between two buildings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can be important, but it's, if there's access from the back. Um, you know, it's not, um, you know, there's plenty of urban environments where buildings are sheet to gel and there ain't no way to get around the fire unless you take the alley. Um, so, um. Yeah, um, yeah. So, uh, I don't, I don't know that there's a, a good reason to, you know, my, my general feeling is that we would do this if there was some sort of aesthetic purpose. Um, and I have a hard time wrapping my head around what aesthetic we might be after uh, by. Positioning buildings on a lot in a uniform way. Um.
Okay.
So.
Uh, Nan, when you guys did the mapping and talked about setbacks, where were you measuring from?
Yeah, I, and I unfortunately I can't answer that question at the moment. I just sent an email over to Rick to, to ask him that question. So I would assume. From based on other work that he's done is that where there was a right-of-way um, identified, it was from the, it was from the edge of the right-of-way. But I've, I've uh, sent him a text on that to ask. I, I do want to address the point that um, if you'll. I, I do want to address the point that, um, if you'll notice in the draft used or the, um, area in dimensions table. We don't have any front setback in the ag rural district. The setbacks are really for, um, the hamlet areas. And I think that, I think the front setback is very important from a streetscape and a street character point of view. Part of what makes a hamlet and part of what. Kind of announces that you're in a hamlet is that the buildings are closer to the road. That's kind of a hallmark of. Hamlet and village planning is to have uniform setbacks, that's what makes it different than out in the countryside. So, um, I, I think that. It, there's a lot of, there's a large role for the front setback to play in the hamlet areas. Not, not in the ag and rural area, which is why we don't have a front setback in the ag rural area. Um, but in the hamlets, I think it's a critical component of what makes a hamlet a hamlet. I think that contributes to. The, the look of that announces that you're in a different place than just out in the country. So, um. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for where we measured it from at this moment, but. Um, I, I hope, well, Rick is watching and he'll email me the answer.
Okay, and in the current use table, the one we discussed. What do we have under minimum front yard setback? Because I don't have the most updated.
Do you want me to put it up on the screen?
Oh, well, yeah, or I can either one, why don't you do it Nan, if you've got it handy, but I'm happy to do it too.
Okay, um.
The one I sent out, uh, after the last meeting, though it's, the numbers have not changed in. Weeks and weeks.
Um, so. Okay, so there's something and can we make that bigger if?
Yep.
Wonder which pair of glasses I can see that with. Nope. Nope.
So you can see there's no setback, well, now we're lost the, let me see if I get that on there, let me make this just a tiny little smaller. So. No, we got rid of side, uh, maybe we never even had side and rear setbacks in there from the very beginning. I don't recall if we took those out or if they were never in there.
They were never in there, I think.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, you have. You have had, um, you know, cool, cool, uh, outlook towards setbacks from the very beginning. So we have just the front side setback in here, nothing in the ag rural district. Fifty feet in the, um. Wait, is this, is this the old one?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I've got the wrong one up here.
Yeah, I've got.
Make Bill a co, Bill, you are.
Yeah, I, I, I can share this one here, yeah.
And Barbara, you have your hand up while he's doing that, what do you have Barbara?
Um, yeah, I, I have a question about kind of the rationale for setbacks that. If, uh, if what's specified is a minimum front yard setback. Um, that doesn't seem to me to achieve, uh, the goals of having. You know, uh, hamlet residences, uh, closer to the road consistently. Because if we're dispelling specifying a minimum front yard setback, um, they can go way, way back if they, if they want to. Uh, beyond that minimum, so, um, I, 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 so, so that's just my, my observation in, uh, regarding the rationale. But I'm, I, I, at this point, I speak against, um, setbacks. Uh, because they do seem to be purely. An aesthetic and I think there's enough, uh, differential topography. Um, you know, within the hamlets in the towns that, um, that feasibly. You're not always going to be able to, you know, to build far back on a property anyway, so. Uh, that kind of forces, uh, forces homes closer to the road in some areas. But I, you know, I think Carolina is characterized by, uh, by diversity of residential structures. Even within, uh, what we have specified as being, um, as being the probable or proposed hamlet. So, uh, at this point, I'm, I'm not particularly fired up about specifying any, uh, setback minimum or maximum.
Yeah, and I just want to comment, um, you're, you're certainly right about a minimum. Um, many places have both a minimum and a maximum, or they say that the setback has to be. Um, you know, kind of lined up with the two, the, you know, surrounding. Structures, so there's different ways of handling to make sure that it, it is more, some communities set a build to line. Which is kind of like a setback, so there, I agree with you that. A twenty foot or a thirty foot, you know, if they have two hundred feet, they could put it back in two hundred feet. Um, so that's why a lot of communities also have a minimum and a maximum in a hamlet or a village setting. But that's, that's up to whatever policy you want to. We could make it happen if that's what you wanted to have happen.
Okay, so currently we have. Uh, I can't read from this distance, so Bill can read.
Yeah, so, and you know, what is missing here, of course, is what zones we've got. So again, the ag rural district here is there's none. And then we go, what, it's Beesmer Civil Springs, West Sladeville, okay. So Beesmer Hamlet has particularly large setback proposals, again, that reflects, uh, and deeply if you drive up like. Caroline, uh, kind of, uh, Brooktondale Road, you see the houses well set back, it's got a large fifty foot setback. And then, uh, West Sladeville and Seville Springs, this group along Route seventy nine have, you know, a lot of houses are quite close to the road there. Um, and then these are probably over into the Brooktondale, yes, this Caroline Center. Uh, we had a proposal to reduce that to twenty to match what we have here, I believe. And then this must be Speedsville and the two Brooktondales are all set to twenty. And one thing that's different, and that we thought for much of the time might be maintained, is a thirty foot setback in the commercial district. So again, it's a not in the ag rural, thirty feet in the commercial. And then varies from a fifty in Beesmer and then, you know, the other ones actually propose to make it twenty in all the other hamlet districts.
Okay, that is what we had decided last week, depending on, we wonder where that was. And we are, I'm thinking that we're thinking that's from. The edge. The edge of the right of way. Right. Are people happy with that?
Well, I think, I, Barbara just proposed to take.
Yeah.
Make them all out.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion, um, and my, my motion is that we, uh, remove. The, uh, the setback line from the dimensions table.
So even for a commercial district?
Uh, even for a commercial district.
Uh, do I, is there a second?
I would second.
Ernie is seconding that, does anyone want to speak to that in motion or against that motion?
I agree with it.
Okay, I can't see other hands up, so anybody else, you have to say something because I can't see you.
Can I ask a, a question?
You may.
Uh, this would be to the buildings.
Yeah.
Um, you know, one of the concerns is, is at least with commercial. Uh, operations is a lot of parking in the front of the building.
Mm-hmm.
If we can regulate. You know, keep the, the building to the front, parking to the back, it seemed to me that that would generally be a better, a better, you know, site plan. Um, but setback requirements don't. Do that, that would be.
So site plan review does.
Just. Just, just, just food for thought.
Okay.
Not, not proposing it.
Okay. So I don't hear anyone else speaking to that? All in favor of Barb's motion to remove this line, say aye.
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 Any names? Hearing none, that passes, we have removed that line. Okay, so that is the setback and road right of way. Um. Let us go on to the water resources overlay. Which is fascinating. Uh. And I think we had quite a long discussion about it last week and. Doesn't too long, it seemed long, maybe it was me.
I'm going to stop this share, all right.
Okay. So, we now know, I think, what those lines on the water resources map looks like. Is it possible to share that map or is that not?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I can definitely do that. And we go back to showing you, so, yeah, and I sent two maps and when I was just looking at them right before the meeting. I think I messed up my colors on the Brooktondale map, so, uh, someone will have to help me scale that one. I think what I drew was the overlay line, but I colored it the same as the buffer line, I want to make sure I get that right. But anyway, we will start by looking at Sladeville Springs.
Okay.
And again, as, as Bruce printed last time, you know, so, so here is Six Mile Creek, the green bar. I don't know how well you guys can see that there, you know, when you're in the town hall. Uh, I can make that a little bigger probably. There. Um, and then, um, so, the current. Uh, draft zoning law has a specification of a, I'd be riparian buffer zone, which is the closest fifty feet. Uh, which is quite well protected and a very minimal disturbance or building, uh, so no gravel pits right here. Um, and then the next fifty feet out is a setback area, which is a additional buffer of protection. That has somewhat looser restrictions, a certain, you can put, you know, that's where you can put your, your. Porch and a few other little things, I'm, I'm now not remembering all the details. Um, and then there'd be similar lines on the other side here, so the first. Fifty feet and the next fifty feet on the south side of the creek as well. Uh, what triggers review? Uh, of really almost any action is being within the overlay and currently the overlay edge. Uh, is one of the parameters is two hundred feet from the, uh, center or bank edge, I can't remember which of, of. Six Mile Creek. And that's this white line here. And the, the flood zone, I didn't map here because I believe it's inside these setback areas. There's also a requirement that of no building in the flood zone is, is in the, in the hundred year flood plain. Uh, in, in the, uh, proposed zoning law, and I believe that's within what we're seeing here, I didn't, didn't map that. My question had been. If people in these houses along the road want to build a porch or an addition or do something else. What the, uh, zoning law says is that they would need to go into an abbreviated site plan review because they are within the water resources overlay. And that makes a lot of sense because we want to make sure, just in case Six Mile Creek wandered a bit or for whatever reason, that we want to make sure we know exactly where this pink. Edge line is. So it makes sense to have the edge of the overlay somewhat outside the actual protection area. My question is whether this is the right amount extra. And so I think that's the question in front of us, is do we want to pull the, along perennial streams, typically the Six Mile Creek. Uh, stream, because that's a special category, because the class A drinking water stream that serves the Ithaca reservoir. Uh, bring this overlay edge in tighter in such a way that maybe at least some of these houses here. And we look at the Brooklyn map, some of the houses in Brooktondale wouldn't have to go through abbreviated site plan review unnecessarily. That's, that's the question.
And let's just for everyone's sake, talk about. What you had said before, I think, is that the riparian buffer is something that the, that Tompkins County recommends. That towns and communities adopt.
As, as well as the setback area, both those are taken from a model ordinance that the Tompkins County, something, something. Um, has proposed.
I think the buffer is also regulated by the D E C, isn't it?
I do not believe so. I did not see it like that.
I, I, I do, because I have a, a protected tributary and. Right from the get-go, the D E C has told me you can't do anything fifty feet from the center of that stream on either side. And also I can't, you can't even cross the stream. So. And I've been, I've been in contact with them multiple times and it's a protected tributary, it's not a class A stream, but it's a protected trip. So I can't imagine that ripe tree and buffer is that. I have another question is. The, our setback or our overlay. Is that the same distance? On the whole map, like, like saying from a protected tributary, because I see with the way it's mapped. Is it the same distance?
Did I send out the whole list of parameters, um, to everybody? I think I did in the email last week. Uh, which I'm not remembering, because I was officially on vacation last week, so I don't remember anything I did. Um, but I, so someone who can pull that up, um, I don't think I have it on this computer. Uh, or Nan, I'm sure has it, and, and then you can run through, I know that it's. Definitely from Six Mile Creek and is it from tributaries to Six Mile Creek? And then there's a different distance from intermittent streams, but I can't remember what was in that set of parameters.
Yeah, it, it's, it's, uh, the resource overlay included a two hundred foot defer measured from the center line. Of the perennial streams in the Six Mile Creek, within the Six Mile Creek watershed. Um, what?
I just found his, his email, okay.
Yeah. Tell me what that is so I can find it.
Well, go, go ahead Nan, I mean, she tells the key things.
Okay, so, yeah, so there, so it's, uh, the two hundred foot buffer from the center line of the perennial stream. Um. All of those perennial streams.
Right.
Um, two hundred buffer, two hundred feet buffer from the edge of the Six Mile Creek is a class A stream. So that is treated a little differently than the others. A hundred foot buffer from the center line. Um. Of, um. I'm just trying to read here, a hundred foot buffer, um. So what he, what, I'm reading Rick's notes here, it's within the Six Mile Creek. He treated the, within the Six Mile Creek watershed as a class A stream differently than perennial streams. Outside of the Six Mile Creek watershed, so. The, the, that white area is two hundred feet in the Six Mile Creek watershed in, in other perennial streams is one hundred feet. It also includes the one hundred year flood zone. Um, it includes the National New York, um. Natural Heritage Riparian buffers, these are not regulatory. I, um, areas that have been identified by New York, but from a natural resource perspective. The Natural Heritage Program has identified. Riparian buffers throughout New York State on every stream, so that includes the natural heritage programs, New York State. Riparian buffers. It includes any D E C regulated. Wetland that's within that area with their regulatory one hundred foot buffer. And it includes other county mapped wetlands within, in a fifty foot buffer of the county wetlands. So, um, it's, it's pretty encompassing. Um, to include all of those water resources, they all kind of overlap, you know, where you have a wetland in the flood zone. You know, next to a creek that would all be all encompassing of that.
So the thing I wanted to point out is that in terms of like the D E C says, you know, they regulate a wetland. And one hundred feet out from that, right, you have to get a permit if you're going to do anything, you know, within the hundred feet of a wetland that, that is D E C regulated, is that correct? So, so using that as an edge of the water resources overlay is just using their buffer. Um, and you would need, I mean, that makes sense because why go inside that distance? Because D E C is going to make you do something anyway, so that makes sense. So the fifty foot extra outside any other wetland is sort of the extra cushion we're adding. That could be twenty five feet maybe, it could be fifty feet, we can decide. But this one around Six Mile Creek is the one that is particularly, it's like another hundred feet larger than the actual thing being regulated. And so this is the one that's particularly large compared to the controlled area, and that's one reason I brought that up. It is indeed fifty feet larger than any other, outside of any other wetland, and we can debate as a committee whether that should be a hundred feet or fifty feet or twenty feet.
Right, I mean, I think it was in, intended to have, like you said, have a location. That is close enough that would trigger, you know, some review and a concern that, you know, we would. We would want to make sure we're protecting the resource. But if that's too wide, you could, you could shrink the water overlay back. So it is the same line as the exact areas where you're regulating. So the, you know, it would be at the purple line or the pink line, whatever that color is. Or something in between. It depends, again, it all goes back to. Um, you know, how, how much protection these resources need and what your. Um, what you, what risk there is and what you're willing to do as a community to address these resources.
Okay, do I have, this is the map as it is now. Um, and so in all other areas except near Six Mile Creek, that line would be, the white line would be. A hundred feet in, is that correct?
It would be the purple one.
It would essentially be the purple line.
Well, not, not the way it is now.
So i- in, in perennial streams outside the Six Mile Creek watershed. Then the answer to your question is yes, because that was the hundred foot distance that Rick used, correct Nan? So outside the Six Mile Creek watershed, then yes, the white line would be a hundred feet closer and therefore lay right on top of the pink line.
Okay.
In the Six Mile Creek watershed, that is where everywhere that line. that line, well, if it's Six Mile Creek, it's two hundred feet from the bank and then otherwise it's two hundred feet from the center line.
Right. And the, and what it requires is if you were trying to build something between the pink line and the white line, you'd have to go to a one meeting site plan review. That's what it would require. So that's what requirement is at the moment. Does anyone want to suggest an, an, an alternate to that? And changing this water resources overlay?
I'd like to go with the pink line all the way on the six mile and on the trips.
So.
Not have it so big.
So Bruce is asking for that amendment.
And just for, uh, I don't know, for information, when I was dealing with my tributary though, after talking to Jay at the text office, uh, time and time again, I've gone over with him. The last time I went and said the D E C says I can't, and I took the paperwork, I can't touch it fifty feet either side of the stream. So that took up ten acres of my land and I was paying the same taxes per acre as I was. That's something I could build on. And he reduced my taxes.
Well, congratulations on getting him into submission, but um, what I will ask him again, Nan also does not, uh, you know, neither one of us has heard that. So if you could find out from, from somehow what regulation that is, because um, I am not aware of it. Again, I'm not an expert on this. I haven't looked at it a lot, but it's like, you know, Nan knows a lot more than I do and she's not heard it either. So let's try to figure this out because um.
I'll check with Barry and also check with uh, one of the people at the D E C.
That'd be great. At any rate, um, I, I, well, no, so I, I'm going to propose that we move it more to be like twenty-five feet off the pink line, but uh.
Okay, I'm going to ask if anyone wants to second what Bruce's idea was, was to essentially have the white line cover the pink line. Does anyone want to second that? Hearing none, that fails. Bill, you're.
So now, now I make a motion that, that um, in the Six Mile Creek watershed, instead of a two hundred foot distance, either from the bank of a Six Mile Creek or from the center line, if it's not, that instead that be, I guess, a hundred and, I don't know, twenty-five, going once, a hundred and thirty, something like that, a hundred and twenty-five. So it's it'd be right out here, enough distance that I hope we really are outside the setback area. So maybe it should be one, I don't know, someone else could change the number, but I'll say one twenty-five.
How many feet is the setback area?
The setback area is the, the pink line is a hundred. He's saying to go to move the white line in, in seventy-five feet and make it
Yeah.
a hundred and twenty-five feet.
So twenty-five feet best.
Yes. That's his motion. Does anyone want to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Barb has seconded that motion. Does anyone want to speak to this or against it?
Asking somebody who's doing something, you know, adjacent to our water resources uh, to uh, have a review or take a quick look. It's a dangerous thing. I'm, I'm still in favor of protecting the wetlands with the white line. That's just me.
Okay.
And, and you know, and Ernie, I'm sympathetic to that, but again, remember that white line for the wetlands basically is staying where we proposed. It's only along riparian areas that I'm proposing this change. Because again, from, it was a D E C regulated, regulated wetland. There's a hundred foot buffer line outside of the wetland that D E C regulates, and that's where this white line sits. And for other county designated wetlands that aren't under D E C jurisdiction, uh, there's a fifty foot buffer and this white line sits there fifty feet away from the wetland, which is everything they're trying to protect. So it's only the riparian area where we again have a hundred foot buffer. And the question is how far outside of that do we want to trigger review? But I agree with you. I said, you know, a one meeting review is not necessarily that big a deal. On the other hand, Caroline is going from no zoning to what? I have to go talk to somebody? And so I, it's a political calculus and I'm, you know, I'm willing to try to give a little extra breathing room to the folks who don't want to have to do anything. So that's why I made the proposal.
Anyone else want to speak to this? All those in favor of Bill's proposal, which would be to move that white line in these riparian areas uh, um, along Six Mile Creek in seventy-five feet, say aye, or you have to shout because I can't see you.
Aye.
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 Okay. Go for it, Gene.
So I'm going to say aye. So that's what it is.
Good.
So that is, uh, we're moving that in slightly closer in that area. And is there anything else that we need to do to this water resources overlay? Or does it pass muster to this point where we bring it forth to the people at the next um, public meeting?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Uh, it is now a little after eight thirty and the only other thing that I'm going to just say is the site plan review, which is not in Articles one, two, three or the terms. I'll be in touch with you this week about that. We're going to, at Craig Motisher and the Review Committee, you're going to look at it. That's the next thing that we will tackle after we actually get this thing finished. So we're going to go on to the terms and definitions.
One real quick thing.
Yep.
Before we go to the public with that map, could we have the buffer on both sides of the stream to show?
Oh, it will be. That whole map, that's the, that, that was Bill's map.
Okay.
Which is lovely, but he doesn't know how to color inside the line. So um, yeah, um, Rick will redo the map.
Yeah. Do you want to see what the, I mean, do you want to see what the whole map looks like just to refresh yourself of what the whole map looked like? I mean, it'd be something like that, only slightly smaller.
That would be handy.
And Gene, just uh, quickly, because it sounds like I didn't track you fully. Are you suggesting that when we are done with Article Three, that we're going to jump to Article Six?
Um, I think that we're going to see where we are, uh, if we're ready to move on to Article. We're, we don't, we haven't had anyone really look at development standards, but I don't think that's keeps us from going ahead with it. So we could do Article Four and then the supplementary standards. I don't think it makes any sense to do Article Six without doing Four and Five.
Okay, good. That, that was the point I was going to make, particularly Article Five. I think Article Four stands a bit more separate, not entirely, but more separate than Article Five from, from, from the site plan review. But I agree. I think we should do them in order, four, five, six.
And me too. But they all sort of have things to do with each other. Um, okay, so that's the map. And um, Rick will now make his changes that we talked about.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that I understood what you just, so you're only talking about changing the overlay boundaries within the Six Mile Creek watershed.
Exactly so.
And you're changing, you're changing it from the two hundred foot buffer to a hundred and twenty-five feet.
Yes.
Right. So, so in effect, I would, I mean, and I don't know if there's anywhere in which the hundred year flood plain is larger than the setback area, which is a hundred feet out. But I would just say that, you know, my view would be that the edge of the water resources overlay ought to be about twenty-five or so feet outside any protected feature along a, along a river. Whether that's the flood zone or the setback area of the riparian buffer. That was sort of the intent, is that we bring that line as tight as we can.
I think we talked about that when we were at the last meeting and I think that makes sense. We know that the, this the feds have been releasing the new flood zone maps. And I actually don't know if they've been released for the town of Carolina yet. They've been released for the city of Ithaca. And I think for the town of Ithaca, but I don't know about the rest. So um, Nan, maybe you could ask Rick to check on that.
Okay.
There is new, there's been new maps coming out. Does anyone happen to know? Has anyone got anything from?
Yeah, we could give a draft. I can.
You can be there. Okay, so they have a draft. Great. Um, did they grow? Do you know, Mark? Did the?
The ones actually in there or?
They're narrow. Interesting. Very interesting. Okay.
So am I to understand that on any of the secondary streams that that like during the setback is still two hundred feet?
No, it's never been two hundred feet.
Okay.
Right, never was. And that's, that's explained in that email I sent you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not, yeah. Okay, so I think we are finished with this. And we're going to go on to terms and maybe we can get through like the A's. Wouldn't that be exciting? Be a big moment for me. So, um.
Did you want me to put that?
Yes, bring that. This is, this is Article thirteen, everyone, which is terminology, which we are planning to move uh, to, to the front, probably after Article One, as I understand from Nan, and generally this then goes in as Article Two. So it's after the, the title, the enacting clause, the scope and purposes, then it becomes Article terms become Article Two, and then we go on to districts.
Right. So, so everything would have a, you know, be off one, up one section.
I, I will never adapt to that, but okay.
If we can do it. I'm considering taking up drinking heavily. Just in the year, so. We can start now. Okay.
So this part, just to get everyone up to speed is um, we had the, the December draft had a set of definitions in it. And then you all went through the years, the use table and asked me to add in definitions for every use that was included in the use table, which I did. That file was then reviewed um, by the zoning commission and several of you uh, sent in comments, uh, which I incorporated most of them. Um, there were some repetitions. There were some changes, some things that were um, really good comments. So those have been addressed. And so the file that I sent you this afternoon, which is what you see right now, includes all of, you know, so it's up to date, including all of those changes. And the, the, and I deleted all of the comments because they were addressed, except so when you see a comment here, that was something that needed discussion by the zoning commission still. So um, I don't know if you all want to just talk about the items that um, have comments still, or if you want to go term by term, or how you want to address this review.
I think what I want to do is do it by sort of by page and see if anyone has issues about page. And we'll just go down with um, if that makes sense.
Yeah, because I didn't get a chance to do.
Okay.
But I went over the page for page and I had quite a few questions.
So here's the updated definitions and um, so we have the Reader's Aid, and then we have Section twelve point one, we have what word usage is so that, uh, you know, what is a person, what is shall, shall is mandatory, may is permissive, use or occupied, use or occupied include the words intended, designed, arranged, the use or occupied. Uh, the word lot includes plot or parcel. Then we go on uh, access, I'm going to say accessory apartment. Does anyone have an issue with that?
Yes, this is, this is Barb. Should I go?
Yes.
Okay, um, for, first of all, I just wanted to, to thank Nan for her work on this. Um, there were um, quite a number of, of comments, you know, some of them were um, more, you know, editorial or getting rid of repetition, that sort of stuff, uh, but others were a bit more substantive. Um, and I, 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 I mean, I think this is, this revision represents a really good, um, really good listening to what she's hearing on the Z C. So, uh, so thank you for that. Um, this item on accessory apartment, uh, my question is about the last line, a mobile home or single wide manufactured home shall not be considered as an accessory apartment. There used to be, I, I see it's now deleted as we get farther into the, into the D's in this definition list. There used to be an item called dwelling accessory residential. Um, and under dwelling accessory residential, it mentioned specifically that elder, elder cottages were allowed. Um, and um, I'm concerned that when I think about what an elder cottage might be in this community, I could very well envision that as a mobile home, that somebody puts on their property for, you know, an elder of their family. Um, and you know, doesn't, doesn't, you know, get one of these, you know, cute high-end elder cottages that's put on their property. So um, I'm concerned that, um, that this last line is, um, is, is discriminating against people who may not be able to afford cutesy elder cottages, but still are trying to meet that same need for uh, an accessory apartment, an accessory dwelling that is a secondary and subordinate use to the principal dwelling, but in fact is, is a, a mobile or single wide manufactured home that's put on that same uh, property. So I'm suggesting that that lot, last line be deleted.
Okay, any comments?
Um, I'm basically in favor. I guess I would like to hear from Nan. You know, they're, they're probably, I'm sure there's a reason, like that, that some communities have found this to be a problem or, or something that, that they become not accessory subordinate or something. But I, I agree with what Barbara said, that I certainly would, would like that to be an option for someone who needs a little extra space for, you know, whatever, if, if it's a, an ill relative or an elder. Um, so that's it.
Um, Nan, do you have anything to comment?
No, I, I think that's right. I think that um, manufactured homes are generally considered principal dwellings and they're, they're usually allowed as a principal dwelling. And so I think, you know, and this is exactly what you said, Bill, is that an accessory apartment is, is intended to be smaller and, you know, not creating two main dwellings on a parcel. So a lot of communities don't allow them because they're, they're not secondary uses. But I, you know, I, I don't think there's a right or wrong way. You have to do what's right for the community. So I, I added in what's, you know, what's typical, but you don't have to do what's typical. If that's what's right for the town, then you take it out.
Okay, so I'm taking what Barb said as a motion and I'm taking Bill's general agreement as a second. Uh, and hearing that, does anyone else have anything to say? Shall we remove the last line? Say aye or nay?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're removing that last line. Okay, uh, one definition down, accessory structure. Anyone have an issue with that? Accessory use. Adaptive reuse explains what these are. Makes sense to me. Adult uses. This is about the adult entertainment businesses, which are defined in Local Law Two of nineteen ninety-nine. And it just is describing what those are. If I hear nothing, I'm going ahead.
Yeah.
Agricultural data statement. This um, is a statement identifying farm operations located within five hundred feet of a boundary of a property, the Ag and Markets. Okay. Agricultural district or certified New York State Agricultural District. Agricultural or farm operation has had a bunch of little amendments in it. So let's take a moment and read that.
Well, we got llamas and alpacas and we don't say anything about goats.
It says, animal husbandry, including horses, llamas and alpacas and the boarding of such animals. The llamas and alpacas have a, have a really good lobbyist. That's what that is. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just do want to say that that is why in the New York State Ag and Markets Law twenty-five A A, they do not outline every specific animal um, for that very reason, because you know, there's a, a whole lot of things that you could wonder. So the livestock and livestock products kind of sums it up, but you know, however you want to, you want to be that specific.
Right.
Or you could say, you could say including but not limited to. And then that catches anything else.
Right. And I guess my point was, is there any reason for the parenthetical phrase at all? I mean, animal husbandry, I mean, it sounds like some people might think that horses, llamas and alpacas wouldn't be included. So we're mentioning specifically, so you realize that we are including them. But I mean, I can't imagine horses wouldn't be thought of. So what's the reason for the parenthetical remark?
I think it's about the boarding. Animal husbandry doesn't necessarily usually include boarding.
Okay, animal husbandry, including boarding? I don't, ever.
Animal husbandry, you could say, I, I don't see why not to leave it, but we're, we're not limited.
Sure.
Okay. Um, forest farming, biking. Fallow. Anyone had any other problems?
I don't have anything, I don't have anything, the artist, by the way, just so you know where I'm coming from.
Okay, so that's ag and farm opera. Okay, so that's ag and farm operation. Then we go on to agricultural resources, which again, I think is a state definition essentially. Lands and soils with potential for agricultural production. Lands of statewide importance that are described, prime agricultural soils are described. That looks good, agricultural, I have. Where is this? Lost my page because, you know, we have. Agricultural structure. Then we have corn mazes, excuse me, agritourism, which corn mazes got added into. Is that with you? You were just, you were just feeling. Okay. We added in corn mazes and pumpkin patches, all weather surface. I thought that was fine, applicant, the applicant. Is there a reason that person is capitalized?
Yeah, I think I took this from maybe your model site plan law, which I believe they capitalized every word that was included in the definition. So we, you know, it's, we have to do it one way or the other. I, you know, we haven't done that everywhere in this law. So, you know, there, I would say we should make them lowercase.
Let's just make it lowercase then, aquifer. Artist studio instructional space.
All right, so I have one question here. And I'm not sure, I just wrote this note like now weeks ago, so I'm not sure. But I said, do, do folks, meaning you all, think a blacksmith would fit this definition? So, you know, that's a fairly typical possible artist type thing around here. And does this include a blacksmith? I would like it to.
I believe it does, I believe that blacksmith is an artisan.
Sculpture.
Well, I mean, it could be a sculptor.
But they could, they could also make, you know, wrought iron fencing or swords. I know a blacksmith who makes swords, right? So.
But I, that's why I think the blacksmith is an artisan who could do any number of things.
Okay, as long as that's.
Yeah. Do you want to add the word blacksmith?
I don't, as long as we're confident they are included, I don't see it needing to be specific, but I just didn't know the answer.
And find it, you know, if we need to. Comes up to the thing, auction house. We have crossed out auto body repair shop and automotive service station and repair.
Replace those with.
Yeah, those were replaced.
Those are down to the Vs now, right?
Yes.
You're into vehicles, okay. Average lot size.
I got something there. So the second sentence, while I agree with it as propaganda, I think does not need to be here. You know, it's saying that it allows for more effective protection of open spaces. I don't think that's part of the definition. It's part of the rationale. And then the last sentence, I just don't even begin to understand.
Yeah, I got that myself, I said, please explain it.
Okay, so I'm going to read this, the average size of all lots to be subdivided from a parcel. Use of an average lot size instead of a minimum lot size in the agricultural rural district allows for more effective protection of open spaces. That's what, what Bill is suggesting be removed. Parcel subdivided using an average lot size reduces individual lot areas and bulk requirements, but the number of lots remains the same as permitted without lot averaging.
Yeah, that's part of the propaganda, yeah.
Well, no, no, it's not part of the propaganda. It's basically, it's not a very well crafted sentence. But it's basically saying that when you use lot averaging, you don't get any more lots than you would if you didn't use lot averaging. So if you have a parcel that your, the density allows you to have five houses and you use average lot sizes, you still get five houses. That's what it's intended to mean. So it's not propaganda, it's trying to explain that it's density neutral, meaning that you get the, it doesn't affect the number of houses or lots you're able to create on that parcel. It just allows you to take the average of them. I mean, I, if that, I agree, that's not well crafted, and I can come up with something better for that.
Okay, so, so my, my move is to take out the second sentence. And my unnecessary move is that, yes, Nan, you know, work on this, the last sentence, but you were going to do that. But I do move, we strike the use of an average through open spaces sentence.
Okay.
And are we using, are we going to define rounding in this part of the definition, or is that covered somewhere else?
I think.
I didn't hear what you said, Ernie.
Round, rounding.
Oh, rounding. That, that should be in the section where we talk about how you do average lot sizes.
I agree.
Okay, so that we are going to rewrite average lot size. We're on to the Bs.
But did we want to agree to take out that sentence? We didn't, I didn't hear agreement.
We didn't have a vote, but I agree, but you didn't have a vote.
I was feeling, I was feeling like an empress. Thank you. I will remove my empress crown. Bakery, an establishment where breads and baked goods are made or sold. Bank. Then we have batteries, energy storage systems, small and large, but we don't have that definition yet.
Well, actually I do, I just grabbed, it's not in here, but I, I, I have added that in this afternoon. It just pulls it directly from the battery, proposed battery law.
And I sent that language out a few weeks back.
Yes, I have it.
Yeah, because, you know, I did modify it slightly, because in the law, it just says it is X. And here, I just, I've cut into two sentences, you know, so whatever language I sent last time, I think reads best for the zoning law. And I can always send that again if you need it.
Yes, please do.
Okay.
The bed and breakfast. Okay.
Bed and breakfast, you know, all it says is, you know, a, a small one is a tier one, because the, the storage law calls them tier one and tier two. So it says small is a tier one, as defined this law, and here's what tier one means. And that's, so I'll send you that tonight, Dan.
Okay.
Bed and breakfast. Maybe, so there was a discussion about whether or not New York State, Ernie says that New York State does not allow manager occupied, they have to live on the premises. Size was just verifying that that was true, and I hadn't seen the latest change to it, so.
That's true, so get rid of manager.
Yeah, we have to get rid of manager, because you have to be an owner. In a bed and breakfast.
So you, so you can't be somebody who, who rents that property and then, and then uses that as a bed and breakfast.
You've got to be.
You've got to be the owner.
Yeah, the idea is that you're going to be taken care of it if you have to live there. If you have somebody running it, you know, and life safety goes up, it becomes a hotel.
Well, but, but, but what about someone who was hired to live there for two years? They didn't own the property, but they were a living on the premises managing it, is that allowed?
Not according to New York State Building Code.
Okay.
Well, I have a question.
And that's where we get into the whole issue, which we haven't really addressed at all, is the whole short term rental, you know, and how those are different from bed and breakfast.
Like Airbnb, in other words. Yeah. Yeah, they are, they're very different and they're.
But we decided to basically permit them, and if they became a problem in the town, revisit that, that's how I recall that being.
Right.
Yes.
Oh, I think we're not, I think we're being quiet about them, is what we're being.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
I mean, and I would say in general, I mean, I, you know, I used to run the Chamber of Commerce, and we had all these Airbnbs pop up. And there's lots, and mostly they're fine, unless someone decides to rent them and have a party and 200 of your closest friends stop over, which happens. And then that's a problem.
Okay, I have a, I have a question as to, if we say one family dwelling, why one, can it be also a two family dwelling? Now, this is New York.
No.
Okay, well, under, on page 14, as we get into home occupation major, it says a home occupation including a bed and breakfast, provided it is an owner managed by a owner occupant of a one or two family home.
So we need to change that when we get there, okay. Um, okay, so we're taking out manager in bed and breakfast. And best management practices, so these are schedules of activities, prohibitions of practices, general good housekeeping, pollution prevention, stormwater management, that's what those are. Okay. Bedroom. Anyone have any problems with that?
Yeah, I'm not there yet.
Yeah, well, you know. I think saying it's time rock and purgatory, but it's not. Brewery, winery, cidery or distillery, not part of farm operation. So there's part of that that's underlined in red, uses that primarily serve food, but also include breweries, wineries or stilleries, or distillery shall be considered a restaurant. That seems good with everyone? Okay, buffer, open spaces, landscape spaces, fences, walls, berms, blah, blah. That good with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, buildable area, the area, okay.
So yes, it's that 25% there. So again, we have not yet discussed Article Four, in which that is specified. But I think based on our discussion from last time, we're still going to, even if we don't wind up prohibiting building on slopes that steep, we might still keep it in the buildable area definition, because we're trying to discourage, you're not overly encouraged building on that. I, that's how I roughly remember where we're left off. But I just don't know if we should specify 25% there or not.
Ernie, I think.
I don't have any problem with it there.
Okay.
Okay. And again, that, that, okay, so we're, yeah, people can do it, but it's sort of, we are saying that crimps your style a little bit, cuts on your buildable area. That's fine, I'm fine with that.
Building. Okay, building envelope.
A building is, it's permanently affixed to land.
Any structure which is permanently affixed to the land, so that means your house.
Those mobile homes, yeah, tiny homes.
Yeah, they're, they're affixed to foundations.
Some are, some aren't.
Well, I think the New York State Building Code requires mobile homes to be affixed to a foundation.
Requires them to be anchored.
Anchor.
Permanently, right, you can pick them up and carry them off, I've done it.
And actually, buildings can be picked up and carried, yeah.
So how about take out the word permanently?
Yeah.
That's, that's the way I'm looking at it.
Okay, so we're taking off permanently, and any structure which is affixed to the land, okay. Building envelope, the space within the structure. And any lands disturbed for well and septic systems. So the building envelope includes the structure, the lot, the building, the driveway, and any lands disturbed for well and septic systems. Is that part of the building code?
No, no, I mean, this is kind of our own thing, where do we use this term?
I think that the building envelope, I, I have to go back and look and see, I'm pretty sure it's used in the conservation subdivision section. I'd have to search through to see where else it's used. It might be.
Right, I think.
Used in the waters, the water and flood overlay, when it talks about if any part of the building envelope is in the setback or the riparian area.
Yeah, you're right, Nan, that rings a bell with me, that it's in there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, so that seems fine. Building footprint, so this is the area of the structure defined with the perimeter, not including driveways, parking lots, landscapes and other non-building facilities, and the area encompassed by the building's outer wall at ground level, including porches, balconies and building projections. Decks less than 30 feet above grade, oh, sorry, 30 inches above grade. Yes, 30 feet would be exciting, cornices and overhang shall not be included in a building footprint. That seem good, that seems good from what I know. Okay, good. Building energy model, so this is a built, a physics based model or simulation to predict and analyze building system level effects and performance related to energy use.
And where do we use that term?
Might have come from your solar law.
No, I think it comes from site plan, because there, it doesn't, 18, there were energy improvements put in the site plan law. And I think that they mentioned the possibility, I'd have to look it up, but I think it's the site plan law.
So then we go down to building height. Vertical distance from the floor elevation to the lowest habitable space to the highest roof ridge or rooftop exclusive of steeple's chimneys, antennae and other roof projections. Okay.
I did have a, I left this comment because I, I believe Barb asked for, there was a footnote with the area and dimensions table that that talked about, kind of reiterated this, and the suggestion was not to duplicate information. My response to that was, this is something that comes off up frequently in zoning. And to repeat it, I don't necessarily think it's, it's a bad idea to repeat that certain things are excluded from being counted as building height. It, you know, it's not a big deal one way or the other, it's just that I don't think that, especially for this one, there's a problem with repeating it as a footnote to the table. But that's totally up to you.
And I guess my concern, I'm sure where Barbara's coming from, is that when you have information repeated, and then you modify it in one place, sometimes you forget to modify it in the other. And so consistency is easier if it's in one place, but I'm not sure that was Barb's concern, or just length of document was her concern. Barb can chime in if she wishes.
Really, really, I was just translating Ernie's comment from an earlier, from, from the Google Doc that we had been working from. So Ernie may want to comment on it.
Oh, I mean, we don't even have building height requirements anymore, so it's kind of a moot point.
We left in 40 feet, and we discussed removing that, but I think we, in the end, left 40 feet in, do we want to? Or do you want to get rid of it?
I think you left it in for commercial, or did, was it for commercial only? I forget, I'd have to look at.
Something, we moved it from 35 to 40.
I thought we changed it to 40, and we left it in for everything, for safety reasons, for what the fire department can handle.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So we're leaving that, okay. I'm going to say that we're going to finish at the, because I need to talk about what our next steps are a little bit. Okay, so. So we have essentially finished articles one, two and three. What Nan is going to do, I hope for us, is make sure that we all get the the most up to date versions of that, we will read it and see if we disagree with anything, or if we think that it's right. And we make some decisions about that. And then we have to finish the terms. I guess my question is, should we, you want to wait two weeks to finish the terms? Or do you want to try to do that, what day is today? Today is.
26.
26, our next meeting date would be the ninth, 10th, I'm forgetting.
The 10th, May, Tuesday, May 10th.
And the review committee just decided that they are meeting on the 11th. To look at the site plan stuff. So do you want to, yeah, yeah, so there. So the question is, do we want to try to meet and finish the terms and get them done? So that we can try to schedule a meeting, a public meeting? And let us talk about when we should have a public meeting in this context? So what do people think? I'm going to drop a calendar, so I know where I am.
I could be next week, I will be gone for a couple of weeks after that.
Next week, you have a meeting, the town has a meeting on the Wednesday. But on Tuesday, is the town hall free?
I believe so.
Would everybody be able to meet next Tuesday and finish the terms?
May 3rd.
May 3rd.
Yeah, you made that a two part statement, Jean, and I'm not sure I can agree with both of those. I do not know if there's the terms next week, but I hope so.
You are going to finish the terms next week, I think, because we are, we just whipped through two letters of the alphabet. And there are very few xylophone definitions in this, so.
So that's fine, I won't be able to be with. So I, that's fine, I won't be able to be with you on the third, but as long as someone takes good notes, that's fine.
We'll do that. Uh, so. If we met on April third.
May third.
May third.
Some, some third. Uh, yes, I can do that too. So let's meet at seven fifteen here in town hall, and let us. Run like young gazelles through the rest of the alphabet, and, um. Then, if that were done, and we were able to, and we had by that time. Also looked at the rest of this in some fashion and said that those terms are good. I think that we could probably begin to toast, to post those. By the end of that week, by say the sixth, which would mean that we would be capable of having, because you said we would post it for two weeks. Um, a public meeting by around the twentieth. Or or in the following week. So.
Do you know, I I would just, I would recommend though, that you guys all have to look through the second version as a group.
Yes.
Before it goes to the public, so.
To do that, so let's say we have a meeting on the tenth. You think we could do that?
You know, I, I guess it depends on how, if you can get through it all in one meeting. I mean, I can have it ready for you, but whether you, you know, whether that is all one meeting, I, you know, I don't know.
So so realistically, Nan, when we, can you have new text of articles, really two and three, but one, two, and three? To us.
Yeah, well, I was, you know, I, other than the definitions, it's basically red. I have, I have to go back through the minutes and make sure I've captured everything, but. Um, you know, certainly. Um, in the next, you know, I would say, I would try and do it by the end of this week, I would have minus the rest of the definitions.
Okay.
But I also have to have Rick redo the map, so that, that's, you know, we have to, and I also have to make sure that we update the zoning map as well. So, you know, we could target having. Having it to you, if you meet on the third to do your definitions. And then we right away get that input. I can get Rick working on the new overlay map and the updated zoning map with the right names, um, for the, for the districts. Which isn't a a big task, um. So yeah, that would give you a week. To look at the whole, you know, the first four chapters now, which is. Adding the definitions into, you know, so there's really four chapters that would be. Part of the package along with the two maps.
Yeah, okay, I feel good about that. I think, um, let's meet on the third, let's meet on the tenth, I think we should be able to. Um. God willing and the creek don't rise, to get that, able to get that done, right?
Yeah, we got twenty pages to go through on the terminology still.
Yeah, we do.
But but, I mean, yes, so Rick can be working on the maps now, right, and it's not, he says it's not a big task.
Right.
I just.
Get him working on it now.
I just would like to see the new draft language, say, a few days, if not a week before May tenth. If possible, is that, that possible?
Yeah.
That sounds good. Okay, I feel great about that. I'm not gonna make any predictions, but I think we're, you know, we're moving along to meeting in early June. That's my, that's my prediction, but not a prediction. It's, it's a, it's a hope. It's a hope, okay? Uh. Terrific.
So did I, did, Nan, did you say you were gonna update the zoning district maps, is that what you had said just a minute ago?
Uh, yeah, because we have, I I think they, you know, you've changed the names, and, uh, we have to go back and make sure they're matched with. The doodles that you had. A couple of months ago, and then we have the overlay map to adjust that you went over tonight.
Because on the website, it's the old.
Yes, right.
Yeah, because we haven't updated it to what, you know, the full version yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and just since we are all here, and this is relevant, but Nan has brought up, so what are we calling some of the districts? For example, we have two different Brooktondale zones, I've sort of started calling them inner and outer, I don't know if people like that idea. And the commercial district, is that a commercial district, or do we use something else to call it large commercial, or something to specify that it's different? That it's not the only place commercial is.
Yes.
So Ernie, you're suggesting you're agreeing with large commercial.
Large commercial sounds like a good idea.
Okay. And how about? Do you want to say Brooktondale Business, Brooktondale Commercial? Brooktondale Inner, Brooktondale Outer, anyone have any thoughts?
How about Brooktondale Central? Um, Brooktondale Outer?
Well, when we talked last week, I was, I was explaining that what you're calling Brooktondale Outer, both sides of the central Brooktondale. Are a lot different each other, so. I'm not sure we should.
I I I understand and agree with you, Bruce, but I don't think that the zoning commission decided to make a change. We actually voted, I think, to keep that all as one district, so it's time to let that one rest and just give it a name.
How about we call it Brooktondale? And Brooktondale Center.
That seems all right. Brooktondale and Brook- and Central Brooktondale.
Brooktondale and Central Brooktondale?
Yeah.
No objections?
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi. So that was Brooktondale and Brooktondale Center?
No, no.
Okay. Great. Good. Okay, um. I want to thank Nan, you did a huge amount of work this last week to get this all done, the terms, and thank you. Everybody, um, please read through the rest of these, um, and if you have anything that rises. To the top of your thinking, um, just send the rest of us an email, so that we are prepared. As we go on next week to look at this, and, you know, to go through, um, reasonably. And everyone have a wonderful week ahead. And it is now nine fifteen, thank you so much, so next week it's nine twelve, we're ending three minutes early.